School Committee to Order, we authorize for the pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This meeting is being livestreamed by Chelmsford Telemedia and posted to the CPS website for interested community members to access and watch. In-person public participation will be taking place tonight in accordance with social distancing and safety protocols established by the Chelmsford School Committee Public Participation Guidelines. Anyone interested in speaking during the meeting input, uh, public input portion of the meeting, the notify superintendent's office of the desire to speak has been provided with these guidelines, assigned the time to attend to speak. If anyone watching this meeting live has questions or comments to share, I encourage to email one of us during the meeting and we'll read their questions or comments during our second public input session at the end of the meeting. So welcome to this meeting of Chelmsford School Committee. Uh, first order of business, I'd like to welcome back Sharon, our recording secretary.
Thank you.
At the meeting.
It's good to be back.
So we have a very full agenda. So the first item on our agenda is approval of our minutes from our meetings on February 17th and March 1st.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the regular school committee meetings of February 17th and March 1st, 2022.
Second.
Any corrections on either? Thank you for the updates on the meeting minutes from the 17th. Yep. All right, uh, all in favor of approval?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Pick five zero. All right, next up, our student representatives.
All right, hi, everyone. Um, I'd like to start off by congratulating Maddie Priestley, Olivia Hall, Amelia Kelly, and Naomi D'Souza for running in the indoor track nationals in New York last weekend. That is a great accomplishment and they represented CHS very well. Also, house Olympics are happening this week, so this concludes, um, includes spirit days and other events where students can get points for their house. And last night's basketball tournament was won by the staff team, but the seniors dominated in the senior versus staff hockey game today. Today was also the career exploration breakfast for the junior class, and they had the opportunity to talk to professionals and fields that they were interested in, which could potentially lead to opportunities down the road for them with the job shadowing day happening before the end of this year. And finally, registration has begun for spring sports with the season beginning this Monday, the 21st.
Academically, we're only two and a half weeks from closing out term three, which is also the day where seniors participating in the Capstone Program will have their final day of school and they'll get to start that, so that's exciting. Congratulations to the members of the speech and debate team who recently competed at the Harvard National Forensics Tournament, which is the largest national high school speech and debate tournament. And Sophia Roy advanced to octo finals in informative speaking and Rishi Ajmera advanced to double octo finals in Lincoln Douglas Debate. So congratulations to the two of them and to the entire team. The writing and literature club is hosting its first ever school-wide writing contest where students can submit a piece on the theme of love, and this contest will close April 1st. Finally, the Theater Guild is preparing to host the preliminary round of the Massachusetts High School Drama Festival here at Chelmsford on Sunday, March 20th, and schools from all across Massachusetts will be coming to do text for their show this week to culminate in the event on Sunday. And Chelmsford's also preparing to put on their own show, Faith and Despondency, where they will be holding an open dress rehearsal for the public tomorrow at 7:00 PM, so all are welcome.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for our student reps?
No, I just want to say, I went to the career fair. I thought it was absolutely excellent. It was wonderful, wonderful to see everybody in person. And it was great to see the enthusiasm on the students, really, truly. So today, Career Fair was great.
All right, any good news that want to share?
I have one piece left. They were taking everything as they were talking. I was scrolling up and down. Just this Saturday is going to be the 11th Annual Grade Four through Twelve Coral Fest. It's a free concert at 1:30 at the CHS Performing Arts Center.
All right, anybody else have any good news that want to share? All right, so we'll move on. Uh, we're at our first public comment session of our meeting, but I don't believe we have any registered speakers, so we'll move on to new business.
You don't? Yeah, thank you very much. We do, we like the agenda item, uh, this evening, bunch to get through, we're gonna jump right into it. So the first one before you this evening is a ratification vote for a memorandum of agreement that was reached with the Chelmsford School Administrators Association. Uh, if you recall, we're actually entering negotiations with all of our different employee unions and, um, the negotiating team for this particular group, uh, met a couple of times and did reach an agreement with the CAA. So I'm just gonna outline the terms for you, and then, um, obviously, Tommy Anajakone is a part of the school committee's, uh, negotiating team, so he's here for the vote as well, and, um, we'll vote on the agreement. In essence, it is a, uh, three-year, uh, contract, beginning this July 1, 2022, and it goes until June 30th, 2025. Um, all the standard language that you would have to incorporate the, uh, current contract and any interim agreements have been included to, uh, roll forward into this particular contract. Couple of different items, just with some, uh, language cleanup within dates within the contract and whatnot. One of the issues or that we, uh, kind of resolved with regard to, uh, pay with this particular group is, um, the consolidation of several of the different pay charts that are at the, uh, back of the contract. Um, so we did agree to consolidate the, uh, the pay grids. We did, uh, similar to what we have in the teacher's contract, add an additional, uh, column or lien, uh, for masses plus, uh, 30 credits. And then, uh, the base essence of this particular contract after that is completed, um, was a three-year contract with a 2% cost of living increase, um, to each of the steps, uh, over the term of the contract. So it's a two-two-two over the three years. Again, couple of different language updates. We did change posting requirements. It used to be that positions had to be posted for 10 days. All of our other contracts only require five, so for consistency purposes, we agreed to change that. We changed, uh, language, there were just various references within the contract that were outdated, uh, that just had to be updated. We agreed to update the, uh, paternal leave language, uh, to mirror what we have in the teacher contract after we had settled the teacher contract the previous time around. I'm sorry, we'd already settled the CAA contract, and then we settled the teachers' contract, and it was right around the time where the state paternal leave language is, um, changing. So we did, um, agree to accept the same languages to the teachers' contract, and it mirrors the, uh, the new state statute on that. We clarified, uh, a day, because now we actually go back to school the Monday before Labor Day. All of our, um, teaching staff and students are off on the Friday for the long weekend. Um, the admin staff used to have to work that particular day, so that will now be a recognized holiday for them. Uh, and then we just updated, again, more language, changing the Board of Selectment to Select Board, because that had been changed. So in essence, that is the agreement that was reached with the, uh, negotiating committee of the, uh, school committee for this contract. I was obviously the, uh, representative for the administration on the group. I would recommend along with the, um, the members of the negotiating team, uh, full ratification of this contract, but happy to answer any questions. Well, Jeff and Dennis, uh, if you have anything to say as well.
Anybody have any questions on the contract? Okay, I just want to say it was a great group to work with, uh, very, very smooth negotiations, and always such a good tone for all the negotiations, so. Very well. Yep. All right, if there are no questions, I'll take a motion.
All right. Is there any specifically, I haven't done a contract in a while.
Yeah, no, we don't do these often. It would just be a, um, a motion to, um, ratify the memorandum of agreement as presented.
Okay. I make a motion to ratify the memorandum of agreement with the Chelmsford School Administrators Association as presented.
Second. Second. Okay, any further questions? Okay, Donna?
Aye.
Any to quote?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Your job is done, Paul.
Excellent work.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, so, uh, next up is, uh, just a review of our school committee goals and superintendent's goals. We'll call mid-year goals, because we got a little late start with, with COVID and everything else, but, um, what I did, uh, in terms of school committee goals, I just went through what our goals were and then went back through the agendas that we've been had over the, the course of the year so far, and just, um, places where we're addressing different elements of the, um, of the, of the goals. And so it, within the document in your packet, um, they list all the goals, and then, uh, the bullet points underneath are the various ways that we've been working towards those goals and some of the dates of those meetings that we, we were, um, we were doing those different activities. So, uh, I don't know if anybody has anything to add or if they have any comments, uh, but I think, you know, you, sometimes you wonder how, how far you're getting along with your goals, but then when you sit down and look at it, we've actually accomplished quite a bit at this point in the year. I mean, there's obviously, there's some goals that, uh, we still need to work on, uh, but, but, you know, we've done a lot, um, given everything else has been going on, so. So any questions or comments?
First, I love the new way that we're doing this.
Yeah.
It just makes it so much more, uh, user-friendly, and I think, um, you know, by keeping it all together like this. And then the only other thing I would add under communication strategy, and it would be under, uh, this is the last page. That we had, um, open sessions for the strategic plan, uh, group last week, right, Linda? Last Wednesday, there were three open sessions that were offered to people.
Yeah.
That, we had that under, I know that it's under the superintendent's update. I didn't know if, so you'd like it under yours as well?
Sure. Yep.
I think probably when I was working on these, we, they hadn't had that yet, so, but, no, that's a good, another good, uh, piece of evidence in terms of that particular goal, so. Anybody else have anything they want to add? I want to thank Assistant Superintendent Hirsch for the formatting of the document.
Yeah, I really like it.
Favorite thing to do.
Yeah, you know.
She's a good woman.
I'm just a, I'm just a plain word document person and advances them up, so.
It just makes it so much easier, you know? So I really like this. I think this is a great idea, and I, I hope we use it going forward.
Whatever you would like.
All right, so any other comments on our goal review at this point? Again, there, there are certainly areas we can continue to work on, and we will, we still have four months left in the year, I believe, at this point, so, um, but I think, I think we'll make a pretty good progress, all things considered, so.
Just a quick suggestion for you, if you wanted to approve it as like a report of progress as amended, um, we can have, incorporate that sentence on there about the strategic planning workshops, and then we'll update this and post it to the website for you, because under the school committee section, we have like the goals for the year and the progress and whatnot. So just so we don't have to come back at the next meeting, we'll just add that line on there, if you'd like to do that. It would just be, um, a motion to accept the report as a report of progress.
Okay.
As amended.
All right. I make a motion. Do it one more time?
Motion.
These are weird, you're giving me weird ones today, I don't.
I'll, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll write them.
Yeah.
Motion to accept the report.
To accept the report.
As a report of progress.
As a report of progress.
As amended.
As amended.
I second that. Jeff, nice job, Jeff. Yeah, absolutely.
On the, um, last page here, in terms of establishment, I have an advisory committee to examine and report on school climate and so on. Was there a, a goal date for this?
We wanted to investigate it during this school year and then work on setting up a committee like this for next year. We're just kind of, set the groundwork, the framework of what we would do and what the scope of the work would be and what, you know, what groups we try to incorporate in that and that work, so I think, that's, obviously, that's one of the areas we, we do need to work on before the end of the year.
Okay, so it'll be an agenda item at some.
Yeah, at some point between now and the end of school year, we'll, we'll definitely
Great.
Work towards that. Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, so we have a motion and a second, so all in favor of approval? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, five zero. All right, move on to your.
Yeah, very similar, um, to the school committee goals. Linda helped, um, go through our different agenda packets and reports that we prepared to help detail some of the, um, the progress that we've made, um, kind of central administration-wise. I know they say superintendent, but it's a collective effort in working on a lot of these goals. And, um, similar to yours, again, we've just kind of detailed some of the, the work that's been done. I, again, in hindsight, until you actually sit and kind of look at this, we really have done a lot of work this year. We've got a lot of different, uh, kind of initiatives and programs in place. It is good to kind of sit down and, um, take a look at where you're at, and as Dennis indicated, we still have a good, you know, four months of the year and a lot of the stuff, the work from the various groups coming to, uh, coming together, so. Really happy with where we are for this, uh, year, again, kind of coming out of COVID at the same time, we're still keeping, uh, momentum going forward, so. That's a little update for you on, on my goals.
Anyone have any questions on the superintendents? Good? And Donna, I don't know if you are looking at something.
No.
All right, so we'll take a motion.
I make a motion to accept the report as a report of progress. I don't have to amend this one.
You don't?
Second. Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, five zero. Great.
All right, thank you. We'll get those updated and posted to the, um, to the website. Item number four this evening is your annual vote that you take on the, uh, school choice participation. So before you, uh, as you recall, we have for a number of years participated in this particular program, and, and what this allows the school committee to do is identify areas in the district where we actually have some enrollment capacity and be able to offer up, uh, some seats to students who, um, do not reside in Chelmsford to be able to, uh, participate and come and be students of Chelmsford. So, um, as we've looked at this over the last couple of years, uh, obviously, we have, um, a little bit of enrollment crunch at the elementary level, um, middle school is, uh, tight as well, but the high school is an area where we have some, um, some space. So we historically, over the last number of years, have opened up some additional slots for incoming ninth grade students, and we do limit it to incoming ninth grade students because we like the student to come and actually be with us for the four years, um, and have a full kind of high, high school experience with us. So in looking at that, um, 12 of our, uh, 41 current students are seniors at the high school, so they'll be graduating this, uh, spring and moving forward. And we look at the number to try to bring it to about 45 students, uh, in total under the school choice participation program. We'd be looking to allow up to 16, uh, new students to come in as freshmen to the high school for the fall. So the recommendation, as written down at the bottom for you, would be motion to allow up to, uh, 16, um, new students to participate as incoming freshmen at Chelmsford High School for the fall. And, uh, obviously, they would then, um, uh, come, they would be students, once they're accepted in, once they're with us for the four years, they don't have to be revoted each year. And, uh, we receive about four, uh, about $5,000 per student, uh, from the state when they do their, uh, funding allocation. And what we've used that revenue for is actually to offset our one-on-one computer initiative, so that the, uh, the one-on-one initiative really is net neutral to the, um, local operating budget for the town and also the schools. So, and I really do view it as a win-win, um, so that would be the recommendation.
Any questions?
What districts do we typically post students from?
Um, if you, if you participate in the program, it's not restrictive, so technically, people can come from anywhere. However, uh, families do need to provide their own transportation, so we're not on the hook for any transportation for any of these students. So typically, it's the Merrimack Valley districts. Lowell is our biggest, um, community that provides students to us. Typically, we'll have, um, Boricca, uh, Tewksbury, Westford, uh, and we may have had a child or two from Tingsborough. But it's, it's the pretty contiguous school districts to, uh, to Chelmsford.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll take a motion.
Make a motion to accept 16 additional new students at Chelmsford High School in grade nine under the Commonwealth of Massachusetts School Choice Program in the 2022-23 school year, bringing the total school choice participation in the Chelmsford Public Schools to 45 enrolled students in the 22-23 school year.
Second.
That wasn't even written down, I just, I just.
Yeah.
I almost asked you to do it again.
No.
We have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, five zero.
So there are typically some, some parents that are kind of watching this, so, uh, tomorrow we'll revise our application, uh, for the school choice program, and we'll have that advertised on our website. And then, uh, typically, we allow the applications to come in for about a month. Uh, so right around April school vacation, we'll look at the applications and see how many we have, determine if we can take all the applicants, if we have 16 or less, if we have more than 16, then we would run a lottery. But our goal is to try to tell the students, um, right after April vacation, if they're going to be accepted in or not. So if anyone was watching, um, that's the process that'll take place next.
Great.
Thank you very much. Item number five, uh, this is a recommendation to have the school committee vote to establish a special, a special, Special Education Reserve Fund, um, under Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 13E. We actually had talked about this a few years back, when the Municipal Modernization Act, um, was passed by the legislature, there was the ability for school systems to set up, in addition to other funds and like revolving funds like we have, a Special Education Reserve Fund. And the, um, the rationale would be if you had additional or excess revenue at the end of a year, you could actually put that money away into the reserve fund for future unanticipated or unbudgeted special education needs. So if we had a student that, say, uh, moved in during the middle of the year, uh, it could pay for tuition, it could pay for transportation, things along those lines. You're allowed to actually, um, put in this particular fund or retain to follow up from year to year, um, 2% of your net school spending amount, which for us is ballpark, a million four, I would say. We opted not to set up this fund a few years back because we still had reserve and we had some cushion within our Special Education, uh, Circuit Breaker Fund. So, yeah, Special Education Circuit Breaker Fund, the school committee has full, um, kind of autonomy and control over. At the end of the year, if we have, again, excess funds, we want to put aside for special education, we can do that, and then the school committee can just draw on those funds whenever we, uh, need to during the course of the year. We typically just do one big transfer at the end of the year to offset local budget expenditures, but we don't have to do anything further than a school committee vote. This particular fund is a little bit different, where the school committee actually would have to vote to establish and authorize the fund. It then has to be approved, uh, by town meeting. So we would then go in April to actually have town meeting vote to acknowledge and authorize that we would then have this Special Education Reserve Fund. You would then be able to put money into that fund, it would be a one-time vote, and then the fund would be there. You'd be able to put money into that fund, but the only way that you can take money out of that fund would be, uh, majority vote of the school committee and a majority vote of the select board, not town meeting, but the select board, because you might have to do something on the fly, you wouldn't want to wait for a town meeting to access the fund, um, in future fiscal years. So again, the only reason we really didn't do that the last time is that we had flexibility within Circuit Breaker, and it was easier to just keep the fund 100% contained within the school committee's authority. We're at the point where we've actually maxed out our Circuit Breaker reserve and how much we can carry over, and if you look over the last couple of years, because we're spending less on tuitions, then we're actually, um, able to carry over less. So I think this is a good opportunity for us to be able to, as we get a little bit deeper into this fiscal year, um, set aside some of the excess special education funds that we have from our own local budget, and also, we received significant funds this year from Valley Collaborative, um, which we didn't budget at the time, they came in after the budget was set. So I think it would make sense to reserve those funds specifically earmarked for special education for things of the future that we're just not anticipating right now. I could see us at the end of the year, you know, putting a million, million two, million two-five, something like that, in the fund, and then obviously, the fund would almost be maxed out. You wouldn't want to bring it right to that amount because it does reset every year. But that would be a good, uh, in my opinion, a good funding strategy, to use some of our excess funding to also put it aside for future, um, years if we need to. Uh, but a first step in doing this would be to have the school committee actually vote to authorize the fund, and then it would go on the town meeting warrant in the spring town. So I don't know if I overexplained, underexplained, but if you have any, you know, questions or concerns, I'm happy to, to talk them through.
Any questions?
So, let's say we could put 1.4 million in, and then we're at the max.
Correct.
And we can't anything after that, or we can't add anything in that year?
No, you're at the max until the fund is.
So that's just the max, period.
As of right, as of right now, it's set by the legislator, legislature at just 2% of the net school spending. Now, if we spend a little bit more on net school spending, obviously, your number's going to increase a little bit.
Right.
But it's not going to go from like 1.4 to 2 million.
Okay.
You know, it's going to stay right around, right now, the 1.4, 1.5.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was just an annual contribution, but you could end up with five million.
Think of it like a savings account.
Okay.
So your savings account is capped at 1.4 million.
Okay.
So the most you can have in there at any given time for our planning purposes would be that. But again, I just think it would be a nice kind of reserve fund for us to have that we could access if the, obviously, the select board would have to be on the same page. But if we ever found ourselves in a situation where, again, we were just underbudgeted, there was a significant expense that was just unforeseen, I think the select board would be, um, open to understanding and meeting about that and discussing and allocating the funding at that point for this.
Other questions?
This is solely for special education.
Correct.
Okay. And how, out of our total student body, how many special education students do we have?
Oh, in total or out of district?
Out of our total student body right now.
It's 15 to 16% of the.
What's the total percentage?
It's about 15 to 16% of the total population.
Our total population right now?
Yeah.
And, and each year, we can't.
2,000-ish, maybe?
Okay. 2,000?
Ball, ballpark.
All right, so, out of this, out of this fund, we can't, so we'd have to spend it down in order to replenish it again?
Yeah, your, your balance is rolling, so like you, as of right now, let's say, you could never have more than a million four in the account.
Right.
So if you spent 600 down, you'd be able to replenish it back up to the 1.4.
Okay.
But you can't go over the 1.4.
And the purposes of the fund would be transportation for special ed, uh, tuitions for special ed?
Yes, it, it's just flagged for any kind of special education cost. So, I mean.
Any and all cost.
Related to special education. It would be primarily earmarked for, say, a tuition, um, a transportation cost associated with sped. Usually, your unforeseen, um, or unfunded costs come from move-ins. So it's a child that moves in from a different district.
Is it usable for anything like, um, salaries or anything like that? As long as it's related to special ed?
I don't know necessarily that it would be prohibited. I would have to look a little deeper into that. I would not recommend it be used for that. In my opinion, this would be a reserve fund for, again, like an extraordinary, some kind of a cost we didn't anticipate. I wouldn't want to use a fund like this for something that we anticipate and we just want a little bit more of. I think that would have to be managed within the local budget, because if we're budgeting this, and then every year, we're going to kind of draw on it to just help sustain the local operating budget.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think that's the true intent of the, um, the fund.
Is this something that we establish what the true intent of the fund is, or is it just statutory?
It's statutory.
Okay. So my only concern about this and establishing this type of fund going down this way is that, um, it needs to be truly clear that it's there for this disposal and only for special ed and only for these particular things, because now suddenly, this is on the town's budget.
Correct.
This is an item on the town's budget, and it's not like, okay, we're not going to give you this 1.5 million, because this year is a tough year, and the money is there[1577.68] year is a tough year and the money is there in this reserve account and you can just go tap into the reserve account. So I, I, I just, everybody needs to understand right up front what this is for and that this is not in lieu, it's not just there in case we need a little extra and the town doesn't have it available in that particular year.
Well, that's the statute stuff right here, chapter 40 section.
I saw the statute.
So I'm, I'm assuming that that's what this is going to be called, right? Or the-
Well, you know, you ha, you can only spend based on the statute.
Right.
And if we ever tried to access the fund, the town accountant and even the auditors would be watching the transaction.
Right.
So it would have to go towards, and again, it's an unanticipated or unbudgeted special education cost. Again, could it be something related to like our kids in our regular day program as opposed to out of district? Yes, I guess you could make that claim, but you have to be very careful about why was it unanticipated or why was it unbudgeted? Do you know what I mean? Because I don't think it's supposed, it's not supposed to be used as a supplement to the local budget. It's supposed to be for extenuating extreme circumstances.
Just, just to clarify too, this is money that we would normally be able to carry over in Circuit Breaker, but our Circuit Breaker numbers are killing down.
Or maxed, then how much we can carry over and it's going down.
And our numbers have been, so we can only keep so much in Circuit Breaker, which we have been, but our cap keeps going down, so that money now can't go into Circuit Breaker. It goes in the bill of max.
Correct.
So we need someplace to-
It just gives us a little operational efficiency because we were trying to get Circuit Breaker closer to that $3 million number. And off the top of my head, can we carry 2.2, 2.3 this year?
I was going to say 2.5.
That's 2.5? No, for, for the current year. Okay. We're, we're, we're off of the, we're off of the 3 million. So this, this again is just going to give us like another funding source to be able to reserve those funds. But I, I think I understand what you're saying, but no, like this wouldn't just be, we're short-changed on the local budget, so we access this fund to, to pay for something.
Donna, you had a question or comment?
Yes, well, see, the issue of carrying so much money in both of these accounts, like why don't we spend down the Circuit Breaker money? We've got that much in it.
Because again, you just, you don't, you, I mean, I know, you have to have, again, this is just my opinion, you have to have a reserve for when those cases come forward during the, the middle of a fiscal year that we then don't have to go to town meeting to try to ask for extra money. Some, you know, we can have move-ins, and again, we do, that people will move into the district. If they already have, like, they've already gone through the IEP process, if they already have an IEP and the IEP calls for an out-of-district placement in a residential setting, you know, some of those fees, I mean, on the low end, you're looking at 100, 150,000, you know, they can go as high as 400, 500,000 for a placement for a year for a child. And then you have to pay that money in year one before you can even apply for Circuit Breaker reimbursement, which wouldn't come to you until year two. So we just, and again, in my opinion, we don't want to be in a situation where we don't have a reserve set aside for this. I think we could talk about what do we think the reserve should be. I have been shooting for it to be, you know, in the 2 to 3 million range. I'd obviously like it to be a little bit higher because then you, you do, on the local budget side, have a little bit of flexibility in how much you offset to the Circuit Breaker fund at the end of the year. And that potentially could give you a little wiggle room within the local operating budget if you needed to make an adjustment. But I wouldn't want to do, say, like a million dollar adjustment because you, you're just going to then be adding recurring costs to your local budget that's going to be difficult to pay in a, in a following fiscal year.
And I don't think we've looked that far in the past where have, this type of situation has hurt the district because they weren't prepared for additional special ed costs that came into the district and it did hurt the operating budget and, you know, you know, took a couple of years to kind of get back, back to where it is. So having a reserve, I think, is, is probably prudent.
What about McKinney-Vento? Like, let's say we have students that move out and now we have to transport them back in. They would have to be special ed students, right? Couldn't use it-
It'd have to be special ed students to tap this particular fund.
Okay.
But we do have a line item in the transportation budget to pay for like a homeless transportation. And before we get into that though, did you have that first number?
Yes. 2330272.
So like, we're capped at 2, 2.3 at this point on McKinney-Vento or like the reimbursement for the homeless? Because that's what Donna was asking now, like, there is a process to go through. What does that reimbursement process look like?
So special ed transportation and homeless transportation are separate in DESI's eyes and in the statute's eyes. So for homeless, it's, it's not special ed and it's shared between the school of origin and the school of residence. If a special ed student is homeless, it's special ed transportation. Special ed always trumps homeless.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And then special ed transportation is never shared. It's the school of origin.
Okay.
Other questions, comments? Okay, so do we need a special motion for, oh, sorry, Donna?
I'm sorry. I know this is coming up later, but are we going to see a drain in, and we have our transportation contract coming up, I'm looking at the, the price of gas going up. So is that going to affect our special education transportation costs, which would cause us to have to dip into that 2 point something million?
Yeah, so the regular red transportation contract is a couple items away that we'll be voting on tonight. That is a three-year contract with optional years four and five. There is no fuel escalation clause in that contract. Yeah, so in our contract, they were actually just bidding a per day, per vehicle rate and there's no fluctuation for gas increases. So we want to get that locked in. Then we have a separate contract for special education services that we'll be meeting with the vendors to, because that one doesn't have to be formally bid. So by statute, the regular red big bus contract is a formal bid process. It's not even an RFP, you know, so you can look at different proposals. It's just based on pure dollars. The special education contracts, you can actually negotiate. So we'll be doing that a little bit later this spring, bringing some vendors in, talking about services. There aren't a lot of vendors, but you know, we'll go through the process to do that. I don't know if, you know, how fuel will come into that because it will be something we have to talk with them about. But your big fuel costs would be in the regular red transportation contract and that does not have a fuel escalation clause.
I was just wondering if we're going to see a drain in this account as we see the price of gas going up because, you know what I'm saying, because we hadn't budgeted for that, so.
Yeah, not, again, not for the regular red. I don't, I mean, SED could be a little volatile, but SED transportation always is a little bit because sometimes you're adding buses, you're removing them based on where the kids are, if they're going to school or not. The only thing I want to be clear about is even if we establish this, this fund, this isn't a fund that we would be like accessing on a daily basis. It would require a vote of the school committee and a vote of the select board to even access funding from it. So it's not something that I even, Joanna, can access the funds from. A formal vote would have to come before you with a recommendation and a rationale and you would have to authorize the use of that fund.
I was more concerned about the Circuit Breaker money and we can use that for transportation, can't we?
You can if you need to.
I was just wondering.
Yeah. And again, that's one where we basically expend out of the local operating budget, even if we go over temporarily at the end of the fiscal year, we'll do a budget transfer and we'll move the expenses from the local budget to the Circuit Breaker account. And that's where we have a little bit of wiggle room with how much we actually charge back to then in essence free up money to the local budget if we ever ran into something.
Anything else? Take a motion?
I make a motion, the school committee vote to establish a special education reserve fund in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Paragraph 13, Echo.
Second. Very nice, John. All right, any other questions? All right, we'll do a roll call. Donna?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
It's not that simple.
All right, so now this has to go to town meeting?
Yes, so this, so your, that was your first step. The next step is to go to town meeting and that'll be a warrant article that we'll have to present and, and answer questions on that evening. Manager Cohen has put that on as an article in anticipation of, of this particular vote because we could always pull it if we had to, if you ever didn't approve it. But when town meeting warrant had to be signed, we had to say if we were going to be doing this or not. So we kind of preemptively put it on, knowing that we could pull it off if you didn't approve, but we couldn't go the other way. So this will be when we go to present on our budget requests in April, this will be another separate article that we actually present on.
Okay.
Could we just go to the select board or the finance committee? Because if this is a warrant article, right, they, they approve, they vote on the warrant articles ahead of time to-
We'll have to review it with them, just like the rationale and whatnot. So yes, it will, the FinCom.
FinCom, yeah, and does the select board vote on the warrants as well?
Yeah, but actually, they may.
Yeah.
I hadn't thought that, thought that on the line.
Yeah, they, they do give recommendations, they would have to vote, yeah.
Yeah.
We can do that.
And, and what if they decide they don't want this fund created, then where does this money go?
Well, we're, we're just basically briefing the FinCom and the select board. They don't have a vote at this point process-wise. The vote is the school committee and the town meeting.
The town meeting, but let's say town meeting turns it down.
If town meeting said no, then we can't establish the fund. We would have to use or, or put our funds elsewhere.
Okay.
All right? Great. All right, next, speaking of transportation contracts.
We're going to roll right into item six, which is the approval of the, this is the big bus, the regular education student transportation contract. And I've been talking for a bit, Joanna, do you want to maybe walk through, through this one? I want to filibuster that, Donna.
So our transportation contract ends June 30th of this year. So we went out for bid and here's a little chart of the procurement process. We advertised January 3rd and then in the three different venues, goods and services, combis and the local paper. And then between January 3rd and January 20th, interested parties could request the bid packet and nine groups did so. We had a voluntary pre-bid conference on January 11th where three people attended besides us here in the district. And then on January 14th, after that, we sent out one addendum and the answers to the questions that came to all the nine people who requested the bid. The addendum had to do with giving one more year of the age of the bus, which everybody seemed to be okay with because buses didn't get a whole lot of use for a couple of years because of the pandemic. And then we had the bid opening on January 20th. We received one bid, which is NRT, and we requested our legal counsel to put together the contract, which the superintendent has for you. And here we are today, just presenting the overview for the past three months with the bus, with the bus contract.
Just one other thing to note on this. The, the bus contract bid had opened prior to us finalizing the budget recommendation. So we did include within the recommendation, the recommended budget, which you've reviewed and approved, the new rates. So they are incorporated within the budget document. So as far as regular education transportation is concerned, we have accounted for that within the fiscal '23 budget.
Questions? You see that, you know, the per day rate and all that, what, how much of an increase is that over what, percentage-wise, I guess, is the?
So today, we're paying $400 per bus per day and in year one, we're going to be paying $412 per bus per day.
Going to make me do the math, what's percentage-wise?
It, we, it was close to what we originally thought. We were thinking it would be around 410 a day, so we weren't that far off.
I could do the math, but I shouldn't know.
I can't do math in my head.
Yeah, and so is, in a similar, a similar percentage increase in the two and three?
Yep, there, there's a little chart.
Yeah, no, I could see the, the per day rates, how they went up. I just didn't know, it was going up like 5% a year or 10%?
More like 3.
3%, okay. All things considered.
Yeah, and then they do, I think, the things that go up a little more, it's not as much money, but like the charters for athletics, things like that, field trips.
Yeah.
I mean, I know we've talked a little bit about this, there's just no competition in our area for, for student transportation. There's slightly more when, you know, you're talking about special education transportation, but there are just not enough vendors in our area that really, on the big bus front, can't even compete with these guys. So we are a little bit beholden to this company. It's not even like if you decided to go out to bid again, you'd bring another vendor in. There's just no competition here. So it's just, it's kind of the unfortunate reality, but this isn't unique to Chelmsford. This is something that, you know, regionally, we've talked about. We used to have, for a student, was another company that was in the area. You know, there's a couple of smaller, Tuxbury Transit and things like that. Dunbar was in the area that used to service smaller districts, but North Reading just, you know, kind of gobbled up a lot of the competition. And this is really our one, one transportation vendor in the area. Generally, I think we've had a pretty good experience with them. I think they have been hampered by the pandemic as well and obviously, we had to cut down on the number of buses that we were operating this year. I think the regular bus drivers do a very good job. They struggle quite a bit whenever we have to bring, well, not volunteer, the, the backup bus drivers, substitute bus drivers in. So it certainly has been a challenge, but I'm hoping for them, similar to us, as we come out of the pandemic, it'll be a little bit better for them and they'll have a little more of a stable work group, but that is something we're going to have to watch.
I think if you read through the contract, you know, the names of the different companies they've acquired over the years are all in that, you know, doing business as, you know, so it's, it's a big fish and a little pond and, yeah. All right, any other questions on the transportation contract? Take a motion.
All right, do we need any numbers in this one?
You don't. I think this is fair to just because the whole contract document is there and your legal counsel has prepared it. It would be fine to just approve a, the regular education transportation contract. I would just say, you know, a three-year with the two option years as presented.
I make a motion to approve the regular education transportation contract for three years with two years of option.
Second. Okay, any other questions? Donna?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye. And special ed will be later than spring or?
Yep, so we're going to start talking with the vendors around special education transportation in early, in early April, so we're only a couple of weeks from that.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much on that one. Moving to item seven, this is a fiscal '22 kind of early projection. And then it's accompanied with some initial one-time budget expenditure recommendations and some budget transfers. But Joanna, could you maybe walk us through the budget projection at this point?
So in our quarterly reports, we've been talking about the favorable variances and a couple areas. Actually, we don't really have too many unfavorable variances by DESI category. So what this budget production, projection does is take all those categories on the regular 19-page document, you look at quarterly and post it on the website monthly, and shows it all in one view. The $65 million budget and the columns off to the right are, there's a column there, most of them are in parentheses, bringing the number down of where we think those categories are going to end up. Again, it's, it's early, but we have, we have a definite trend going on, we're in the third quarter. And at this time, we think we're going to be about $3.9 million favorable. And we've been seeing that for the first few quarters as reported. So this is an opportunity to bring to you some suggestions and recommendations for how to reallocate these funds since we know some areas are just going to remain favorable. The biggest areas being, we've talked about this, hiring, if a teacher retired and the new person coming in wasn't at master step three, they came in at bachelor step one. Or people taking approved unpaid leave of absences. And then we're seeing that some people are deciding to stay out, you know, longer. It's a family decision. So in the end, with all these ups and downs, and the superintendent pointed out, the other big one was we did prepay tuitions, so that wasn't in our original budget. And also, we did receive the Valley credit. So that's almost half of it right there, which we've known for several months. So the rest of the discussion, I'll turn over to the superintendent to talk about the recommendations of some ideas on how to reallocate these funds. And then we'll come back with more in a couple of months.
Any questions on the projection document? And some of the two, the transportation, because we're not running the full complement of buses.
We, yeah, we cut down two of them, correct?
Yeah. Right, so that's a big-
That was a good chunk.
Big chunk there too.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
So, yeah, I mean, I, it's just the way it was kind of broken up on the agenda because I kind of lay out for you in the next memo, the one-time recommendations, but even a little bit of a funding strategy. I do, as Joanna said, want to just kind of flag for you that we are still early in the, we're in the middle of the third quarter. But typically, it's the April timeframe when we actually do the third quarter report, which would encompass all of March. And then at the end of April is when we would present the third quarter projection. We would then also produce the list of one-time recommended expenditures and we try to get kind of a head start for things on the summertime. There were a couple of projects, as we're actually going through right now, just because of lead time on materials, that I think it makes sense to review and if you agree, approve this evening because the work for these particular projects could happen over the summer as opposed to, you will receive more projects and recommendations at that last meeting in April, but we basically lose about six weeks of time, which is necessary for ordering some of these bigger projects. And really, we would not be able to accomplish them in July or August if we didn't act early. So this is kind of a multi-phased approach. But one of the, so the recommendation overall, again, we're looking at a little shy of 4 million, 3.9 million of potential excess funding. And as Joanna indicated, half of that is from SED and that's, that's been discussed. I would recommend that we look at up to about a million and a half dollars over the two meetings for like one-time expenditures, which we have done over the last number of years. I think we've spent, you know, between a million, million and a half over the last couple of years and we've really knocked off some good projects. And we're able to use, you know, our excess local funding budget to get done extra capital projects, which we then can take off the town's capitalist. We haven't had to go to the town, you know, to ask for additional funding for some of these projects, so we kind of manage them within our own budget. So I think we, that's worked for us very well. I think we should stick with that. I think as a secondary factor would be putting aside some funding in that new special ed reserve fund. Again, I earmarked a million two five, but somewhere between a million, million and the million four in that account at the year end. And then that will actually kind of help us be like the, the secondary reserve. So if we ever had to go and actually spend some money for special ed unanticipated costs, we would first go to Circuit Breaker, right? Because we're going to have somewhere between the $2 or $2.5 million in that account. And then, God forbid, we ever use that, we would have to then go to the special reserve fund with the select board vote to access that funding. I could actually see us, you know, hopefully, we never have to increase SPECT costs like $2 or $3 million in a particular year from that. But you could be in a situation where you want to smooth out over a number of fiscal years, a, a big expense that came in. So if you ever did pick up two or three big tuitions that maybe added up to $1 million, you don't have that in your local budget. You might want to kind of smooth the, the effect of that and access your circuit breaker funding, but then also a little bit of the reserve funding, so that you're not really getting hit in one particular year. So I, my second phase would be, again, to establish that fund, we took the first step today, but actually to put money in that, kind of our savings bank for going forward. And then a third facet, to, again, because you have the ability, prepay the special education tuitions using fiscal '22 funding to offset fiscal '23. And what that allows us to do is basically, we would then know, we would have extra money, $1 million, $1.5 million, whatever we end up doing on that front, in next year's budget, which is unallocated, that we can reallocate within the budget to pay for programs or services or things like that that we need next year. The thought process was, you know, to actually do that this year. However, in all honesty, you know, even if we, we had the funding available to us, we can't hire additional staff at this point in time if we wanted to. You know, we have been actively trying to hire, and we've done a very good job of filling all of our professional teaching positions or whatnot, but, you know, paras and aides and supports have just been very difficult to, to hire. Tutors and interventionists and things along those lines, also, we've been trying to hire, and it's just been very, very difficult. I'm hoping, again, next year is a little bit different, and we could actually, you know, take the summer and early fall to figure out where to earmark that funding, to help out with some of the extra needs that we're seeing at the school level, the elementary, the middle of the high school. So that would be kind of my recommended three-pronged approach. One, spending a good chunk of it on one-time projects. Second, putting funding aside in that new special ed reserve fund. And then, third, carrying over a balance, we would basically use that to kind of tie out our budget at the end of the year, but doing that to, to encumber and utilize the funding. I'll take a break for a second and answer any questions on that. And then, again, what we kind of worked on internally is about a half a million dollars worth of projects, and they're just a couple of big ones, that if we actually looked at and approved now, again, because of lead times, we could get in, in the process and actually have the equipment and materials and services come in, in the June-July timeframe, so that we're actually in, up and running for the start of the school year. So those were a couple of the projects, and again, I flag for you, this is just a, a portion of them. There were a lot of other little smaller school-based projects, these are kind of the big numbers. But we have three schools that are left, where we're trying to go through kind of strategically over the last couple of years and replace the student cafeteria tables that are just in, in tough shape. So you have Biem, Center, and Harrington on here for that. At the high school, another kind of significant project for us is the stadium lighting and replacing that, with the thought process being, it really is in need of, of replacement. If you're, if you're there, there were dark spots or whatnot. Putting in a new lighting system similar to what we have it with the aluminum poles at McCarthy, but reutilizing the lighting that is currently in the stadium on the tennis and basketball and street hockey complex, because they don't have to actually be as high, so they could, Gary and DPW have looked for the vendor, who could actually take that lighting and reuse it when they redo the tennis court area to have lighting there, because we don't have lighting there right now. So we'd actually get to reutilize the lighting, obviously, they'd need new poles or whatnot, but we'd get new state-of-the-art lighting at the, at the stadium. Working with the vendors who work on that, they're obviously, this work gets done over the summer, so you kind of have to get in a queue to get it done, and your lead time is anywhere from, you know, 10 to 12 weeks to get the physical equipment to even install, and then you've got to work with the person to do the install. So, you know, these, I would recommend that committee discuss and consider these smaller subset of projects tonight, knowing that at the second meeting in April is when we bring forward the next list of recommendations, and that would be a lot of smaller things, kind of encompassing all of the different schools. And some examples of those, you know, over the last year, like, we added, you know, the gymnasium dividers at a couple of the elementary schools. We did a kitchen, you know, at Parker, you know, we've got McCarthy kind of flagged for capital this year. Lecture halls, things along those lines. So that would be coming in, in, at the end of April. We just don't have finalized quotes and things like that at this point, that's still being worked out. But maybe I'll stop there and just kind of answer any questions you have just on strategy, and then obviously, any of these particular projects you may have a question on.
Well, start, anybody have a question on the overall strategy, the three-pronged approach with the prepaid tuitions, the capital improvements in the new account?
Of course, not the prepaid tuition. We've been doing that now for a couple of years.
True.
So when we continuously do that, we're essentially always making that money available at the end of the year as an excess amount, because we're prepaying, essentially. At what point do we not do that as a strategy?
Well, you, the problem that we've had is we're making it available, and you hope to use it in that next fiscal year, but the first year that we did it was the year COVID hit us. So, you know, we really just weren't functioning to be able to even allocate or use that funding. I think we thought last year when we did it, that we'd be coming out of COVID a little bit quicker, that we'd be identifying different gaps and needs in services, and we might be able to reallocate and use that funding for this year to provide some of those extras. And we just honestly, I mentioned like on the staffing front, we haven't had the ability to hire extra staff to even service kids at programs and things like that. So my real intention would be not to just have this continue to roll year to year to year, but to next year, be able to have this money as a set aside to be able to actually, you know, hire some additional staff or services and utilize that funding for that.
Okay.
Other questions on the overall strategy?
With regards to the prepaid tuition, when we send kids out of district to schools, I know that their rates go up as well. Do they have to raise their rates at a certain time of year, or can they do it at will?
They have to go to OSD and present their rates. Most of them do it kind of around next coming months, because they know districts are budgeting and that. But they could go at any time if they needed to, if some, they had some big structural change, but most of them try to do it between now and over the summer, so that when we get those first bills in September, it's all under the new rates.
I only ask because I didn't know if that, that might be part of the advantage to prepaying some of these tuitions, because sometimes they do go up, but it sounds like we might know it in advance of the beginning of the next school year, so.
Well, if.
I know what you're saying. If you, it's tricky, though, because you're basically, I'd love to say you could do that, like, you're not locking in.
Okay.
So you think about like, you know, prepaying for a vacation a year from now, but then the costs go up, and you still get it at the cheaper rate. The rates are all set by OSD, that Operational Services Division from the state. So if the, we think the rate's going to be $100 in July, and the rate ends up increasing to 125, and we prepaid 100, then we only owe 25. It's not like we're locking in the 100, and that's, that's covering it. I like the way you think. But that's just for all practical purposes, with the way the state contract works, it doesn't work that way.
Okay.
But it was a very good try.
Any other questions on the overall strategy?
Just with regards to the one-time purchase recommendations, is there any way we can start setting some money aside for the tennis courts? I know that, that Paul was going to take a look at that through the capital project, as well as with the community preservation funds.
Yep.
But, you know, I think we've been talking about.
Is actually, well, there is, there's actually a special time meeting warrant on it, April for that. So, yeah, Manager Cohen put that on as a standalone item, so it is on the agenda for this, this April.
Great.
So what we had talked about a little bit offline with him, because, again, we just don't know, the, the bid prices we have, and even like what will go to time meeting, obviously, we would hope would cover the, the complex. We don't know what's going to happen with bidding on some of these things for material and things like that. So I have talked to Gary, because we don't want to shortchange the project. So if, if, let's just, for argument's sake, say we wanted six tennis courts, and the bid came in, and really could only accomplish five, I don't want to cut to five. You know, I'd rather come back and say, should we kick in a little bit of money, should someone else kick in a little bit of money to be able to get the product that we really wanted to get? So we'll still have some play in that, but the whole complex with the, the redo of the tennis courts and the basketball and the hockey is a special warrant in April, so that is already on the agenda.
But should we hold some funds aside just in case they need us to kick in a little?
I think the timing is going to be tough on that.
Okay.
Because if it gets approved in time meeting in April, realistically, that project is not going to get done this, it's just not going to get done this summer or even fall, because you're going to have to get architects out there, landscape people, to do the whole design work. It'll probably go out to bid, I'm going to say, late fall, you know, early winter, for a project to be completed in the summer of 23? Yeah, so this is summer 22, summer 23, or maybe even the fall of 23, so you don't lose the, the tennis season. But we really couldn't allocate money for this fiscal year in question to pay in the future year. But we might look at that when we're trying to certify or like figure out what our excess money might be, say, a year from now. But it would be something that I think if the bid ever came in higher, or we weren't quite getting what we wanted, we would come back to the table and talk between, you know, school committee or select board, or, as you mentioned, the Conservation Committee, Commission, we'd figure out a, a way to, to get what we want.
All right. Any questions on the one-time recommendations? The cafeteria tables or the lighting, is also something, is that?
Oh, yeah, additional access control for the, the, it's the positioning of the modular classroom at the Harrington, where that school is so up on the street. It's for the kids when they're coming back and forth between the two buildings, to have additional visibility on the, the kids, and like, you know, the airphone where you buzz in to the building, so that they can see in the main office, and the students don't have to go back and forth with, say, the key swipe card. So it's more of a, kind of like a safety and security thing that the school had identified, and they worked with the, the vendor to be able to quote out what it would cost to add that additional layer of access.
And so that's not an issue with the other modules?
No, because, a, a lot of this is really just the proximity of Harrington, it hasn't come up with the other ones. The center modules are attached to the building, so there's no issue there. South Row is literally like walking out one door, walking in another doors, but it's where there's the driveway between the schools, and again, they're right up on the street, even at Biem, like, the Biem property itself is just so stepped back that it's not an issue. When the kids come across, there's a gate there, it's usually like a, you know, the recess guard, and they come right in the side door. So no, they have not flagged that there's an issue at that school.
Other questions on the one-time? So South Row already has cafeteria tables, I assume, since they're not on that list?
Yeah, I think we did them last year, correct?
Okay.
Yep.
I didn't want to leave them out.
Right, this will, we, we set up kind of like a little refresh plan, if you will, and, you know, we started at high school, and then went, and now, and these are the last three.
Okay. All right, anybody else have any questions? All right, so now we would have to do some transfers?
Well, so we would do a vote to approve of these capital projects totaling $518, $944, and then we'd go on to the next report, which would be the accompanying budget transfers.
Take a motion to approve the.
So I'm approving the actual transfers, right?
No, just the recommendations.
The recommended one-time purchases, all right, and then we'll get to the transfers.
Got it, okay. I make a motion to approve the listed one-time purchase recommendations.
Second.
All right, any other questions? All right, Donna?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Now we do the transfers.
Now it is.
And now Joanna will walk you through the transfers.
So the next memo is just grouping these in three categories. The first budget transfer is for $116,193 to fund the three cafeteria tables. The second set is to fund the stadium lighting, and that's the $385, $286. And then the third is to fund $17,465 for the airphone, airphone door. And then I took, if you look at the projection, in the categories that are favorable, that's where my FROM accounts are, and then on the right, the TO accounts are where the cost should be recorded in the DESI function code.
Any questions on that?
Makes sense.
Right.
I make a motion to approve these FY '22 local operating budget transfers for the Chelmsford Public Schools as presented.
Second.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, Donna?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item number 10. This involves the, we've talked about this in previous meetings as well, the incoming fifth grade students and the feeder patterns from the elementary schools up to McCarthy and Parker. This has come up a little bit in the discussion around class size and just even like parent interest in keeping their children with the cohort of students that they attend school with. Every year, I look at this to see if it's possible or not. Most years, it's not. This year is a little bit different, so I'm just presenting this to you to, number one, let you know that this is something we look at every year, and we talked to parents about to see if it would make sense or not. And this particular year, I do think it makes sense, but where we haven't done in the past, I didn't want to just move on this without telling you. So, you know, just as, as way of background, our four elementary schools obviously feed up in fifth grade to middle school right now, so we're only going to talk about this particular year. All students from Center Elementary School and all students from South Row Elementary School automatically go to McCarthy Middle School. It's always been that way, just based on the way the geography maps work. The vast majority of students at Biem and Harrington go to Parker. However, the way the map of the town is drawn with the school zones, there's a little piece of, almost looks like a piece of pie, up in the North Chelmsford area that feeds to McCarthy instead of Biem. And what that results in is students might be together for elementary school with their little cohort of friends and classmates, and like, for instance, at, at, at Biem, you know, you have 114 students, 101 of them are going to go to Parker, but there's 13 students that are slated to go to McCarthy instead because of this. And I'm certain it was done for enrollment purposes and to try to keep balance in the schools in the past. It just doesn't always work out perfectly as far as the schools are concerned. So each year, and this year, I reached out to the parents, I gave you a copy of the little correspondence that I sent to them, to just try to ascertain about these 32 kids, you know, if the parents actually have the option of having their child move and continue with their class at Biem or Harrington and go to Parker instead of going to McCarthy, would they want to take us up on that offer or option? And it was interesting, it came right down the middle, it was 16-16. So we had 16 families that actually would like to do that, and the, the other 16 families prefer to just go to McCarthy, even though the kids wouldn't be staying with their classmates. A lot of that, as we're just kind of doing a little bit of research on it, seems to be that they've already either had older siblings, or they have siblings already at McCarthy, and they don't want to split into two schools, which I totally get. But I actually think it's, it's worth our while this year. It doesn't operationally hinder us, because the, the, the properties are so close, the buses are running near there anyway. There were really no major operational issues as to why we couldn't do this, and it would basically divert, for all practical purposes, you know, 16 kids who would be going to McCarthy, it would send them with their classmates, based on parent preference, to Parker. And then on the second page of this, it balances out a little bit better, the numbers going into Parker and McCarthy for the fall. And again, I also kind of preface this by saying, this is before any of the, because we do lose students each year, some will elect to go when they hit middle school to like Innovation Academy, some will like private or prokial schools for middle school, so there are likely still some students here who are coming out, and I really won't know what schools they're at now, which schools they're attending for a little bit, but this gets us to a happier median between the two schools for, for right now, at least for planning purposes to start the fall. So, again, in my communications with the parents, I think this, the 16 families are very interested in doing this, it's voluntary on their part, it does not negatively impact the schools in any way, because the enrollments stay relatively consistent, it just kind of narrows the, the enrollments of the two schools. And from my end, I don't really see any operational issues in doing this, so I would like to allow these parents to kind of make that decision and to effectuate this for the fall. But again, we just haven't done this previously. The, when we updated our school committee policies, it actually, they grant me the authority to do this, so there's really no formal vote of the committee, but I just wouldn't want to do it with, if it was something that you were opposed to, or you had a strong feeling about, so I just wanted to bring it forward to, to discuss with you.
Questions? I mean, I, I think it's a good idea, we, right now, if we don't do it as a 50-student difference, and if we do, as a 20-student difference, and they both have the same number of sections, right, for fifth grade, so that's a, that's a big difference for those fifth grade teachers in terms of how many students they would have in a classroom at McCarthy versus Parker, so I think that's, you know, it's probably a very good solution to the problem.
As, as a first step, you know, as, as we're looking at this, I think it, it really does, I mean, because we have eight sections, so it really knocks down two students right out of the gate as far as the, the enrollments are concerned. And there's still going to be some variability, because students are still going to go to the charters and things like that, we have to wait till those, those work out. You know, I, I wouldn't. You know, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable at this point telling the sixteen families who would prefer to go to McCarthy that they have to go to Parker because obviously there's a reason that they're selecting that, and a lot of it deals with, you know, families that they already, siblings and things like that. So I'd want to honor and allow them to, for the time being, still go to McCarthy, but I, I think it really makes sense for the other sixteen. Or if anyone changes their mind and wants to do this, even as we start to have discussion about, you know, a year or two from now, if we would ever do that merger and split the schools five, six, seven, eight, you know, that may change some opinions later on this spring, too, and we would still have flexibility to make changes right up until the start of the school year. I wouldn't want to make a change after the, the kids got into school, but we'd have some, some flexibility in doing that. So. Like I said, just wanted to put that out there. Let you know what I was thinking and what I'd heard back from the parents we communicated with.
Any other?
This brings more equity to the whole process between the schools. There was consent by the families and they, they agreed to the process. So I think, you know, it's great. It's, it's a start. This is a beginning of a solution.
Right.
All right, anything else? Any other thoughts on this? Okay, so we don't have to take any action?
You don't. Like I said, I just, I wouldn't want to do something if it was, if you had a strong opinion one way or the other, but I just wanted to.
Can I ask you, generally, the classroom sizes, and I don't know Parker as a building as well as I know McCarthy. Are Parker classrooms about the same size as McCarthy?
I honestly want to say I think McCarthy is slightly larger than Parker. I could look, oh, good night, ladies. I'd have to look back at the, the door on Woodya Study because I know they took square footage of the different classrooms.
Yeah.
But in, just based on memory, the McCarthy classrooms are a little bit bigger than the Parker classrooms.
Yeah.
McCarthy used to be a high school, so I'm sure the classrooms are a little bigger for bigger bodies.
Yeah, so even though this is the beginning of a solution, we still have a problem. You know, eventually, if, if we were to really truly make it equal, yet because we have smaller space in terms of facility at Parker, we may not be able to make it totally equal.
Well, they're both running the same, they both have the same strand structure now.
That's correct.
They both have the same number of teachers. The classrooms are just a little bit smaller. But it is, like I said, I, I do think this is a good first step as we're continuing to look at this, and it would seem to make sense. Again, we're, as you mentioned, it's something that parents actually are consenting to.
Right.
And it helps us as a district. You know, if it went the other way, I couldn't recommend it, but this, this seems to work for us.
All right, great.
I'll communicate with those parents before the end of the week.
All right, COVID updates.
Definitely a good COVID update. The, the second meeting of the month. So just to be consistent with what we've provided in the past, we always kind of take a look at our community data with regard to, to COVID. We see in Chelmsford our total population by age category, you know, the number of students or children ages five to nineteen that have at least one dose of the vaccine. You know, and then fully vaccinated in the far right-hand column. You know, our high school age kids, our sixteen to nineteen-year-olds are up to eighty-eight percent vaccinated, which I think is great. And even our youngest, who are the newest to become eligible for vaccine, you know, are already at the sixty-four percent fully vaccinated. So. I think townwide, our, our data looks pretty strong. I know the work that Peggy Gump and our partner, Remedian Pharmacy, have done, offering the vaccine clinics, has been very well received by the families. So I think as a community, we're really on the right, on the right phase with that. On the next page, we take a look at the school-level vaccination status within the district. And you can see this is something that we trend over time. We just show our total enrollment by school, the number of students that are fully vaccinated in those buildings, and then we come up with our percents. And you can see again, like, say, at the high school level, it's not far off from the town-level data. Obviously, everyone who lives in the town doesn't necessarily go to Chelmsford High School, but it's, it's pretty representative. And in this one, you've seen pretty incremental progress at the middle schools. McCarthy at seventy-four percent fully vaccinated, Parker at sixty-nine. And then our elementary schools, again, on the vaccination front, doing, doing fairly well and pretty strong, getting those numbers up. And that's the number that keeps kind of growing a little bit. So we're happy on that front. Any questions on either the town or the individual school-level vaccination data?
School level, they're still self-reporting, right? They, they have to tell us that they have?
Yeah, they do have to tell us. Most, most people at this point have. I know Peggy and the nurses, from time to time, will go into the state database to verify, and if they do find someone is vaccinated in the state database, they'll update our record accordingly. So this is people voluntarily consenting and providing it, or it could be information that's been accessed through the state database, and it will be verified and edited for each of the children.
Any questions on vaccinations?
All right. A couple of our initiatives that we still have going on in the district. We are still pool testing each week, and we are still getting very good responses to this. The number of people who are participating, you know, have kind of dwindled off, so the group that we have participating each week are kind of our regulars at this point. And we are pool testing, you know, over a thousand per week, which I still think is a very good number. This is kind of our surveillance testing program. And every week, you know, we'll see a little bit later on, you know, we do identify a handful of students who are asymptomatic, who didn't obviously know that they were COVID positive because they were coming to school. And we're able to kind of filter them out of the, out of the school and, and now really kind of care for them and make sure that they're healthy and well when they come back. But what we track here is anyone can still sign up for pool testing. It's, it is voluntary. Again, we're not seeing a lot of people adding each week. But as of March eleventh, when I pulled this data, we had about seventeen hundred students participating in the pool testing in the buildings, which, which I think is, again, fairly strong. On any given week, we have a little over a thousand tests that we're administering. On our next slide, we actually, this is just a little, I've got to figure out a way, I think, actually, for next week's dashboard because the print is getting a little bit too small because we now have so many weeks. But we've been doing and tracking our pool testing for twenty-one weeks now. So we have, as a district, reported and administered over twenty-five thousand pool tests in the, in the schools. And of that twenty-five thousand tests district-wide, you know, we've had a total of a hundred and sixty-four positives identified. And if you're looking at this data, you can kind of see that, that grouping right after the Christmas holiday. In January, where you saw the pools really kind of jump up high. And then you've seen it, you know, week to week, and we're continuing to see this. We're settling out again. And, you know, last week, we actually had just four positive cases identified through the pool testing out of the eleven hundred and sixty-eight that we administered. So, you know, that's ninety-nine point seven percent are negative, but we're picking up that point three, and we're able to, again, kind of help and care for those, for those students. But again, good data, I think, as a district. We love to see that number continue to decline. You know, just a quick preview, we're going to get some of our pool testing results in tomorrow before we have to post the weekly dashboard. But when we get to our, just general COVID cases in the district, I think we're right around ten for the week, which again, is significantly lower than it had been previously. But, you know, very good participate in pool testing. People can still sign up if they'd like to. There is a rolling admission process for this, and then you just stop participating the following week. Our other mitigation strategy on the next page, and this was our newer one, this is our rapid antigen test kits that we send home every other week. So anyone, staff or students who signed up for this program, receive every other Friday a test kit to bring home. We ask them to test, you know, once a week, based on when they do their pool testing in the school. Hopefully, they're doing pool testing as well. But they're having an opportunity to do the pool testing in the building, which is kind of your high-level PCR test. And then this rapid antigen test kit at home is, is kind of the quick, the quick hit that they take. And they do that once a week. They get two test kits. If they're positive, they let us know. If they're negative, they just go about their business. They don't have to let us know. But again, we have very good participation in this program. Over three thousand staff and students in the district registered to get test kits and receive them every other Friday. So as a district, those are our two, you know, kind of mitigation practices that are still in place. The state is still fully funding both, so they're still fully funding the test kits and they're fully funding the COVID pool testing, so we haven't had to pay for that at all. It's a lift for us. It's a lot of, you know, human work to, to make it work, but there's no financial. So we're going to continue those through the end of the school year.
Any idea how many positives come back from the at-home kit, test kits?
They would be included in our weekly tally.
Okay.
So like we're talking about, like, we're going to probably post ten for the week.
Yeah.
So those would be part of that. The positives that we're getting, by and large, are the pools, because we know, because we're getting the results. And then positives either through the at-home, or, you know, we still are hooked up with the, the state. So on the database, we can see if Chelmsford residents in our schools have tested positive and seen a doctor.
Any other questions on testing procedures?
Pool testing or rapid antigen tests?
Okay.
Okay. And then last, this is just something that we've continued since the beginning of the school year. This is our COVID dashboard. We post this to the website every Friday morning, along with our pool testing results. And again, you saw these numbers pretty significantly higher in January. I know there was some concern about coming back from the February break and would we see a little bit of spike in numbers, and we truthfully didn't. The numbers have remained, you know, very low. Last week, we posted thirteen. You know, we have thirteen students in the district with, with positive cases. And this week, again, as of right now, it's ten, but, you know, we're definitely hovering in the, in the lower numbers. We were at, gosh, I want to say, two to three hundred when we were coming back from the, the holiday break. So a very manageable group that we're working with, and, and families and staff seem to still be, you know, happy that we're posting this data and helping them track it. So we plan on doing this through the end of the school year.
Any other questions on COVID numbers or? All right, great. Hopefully, in a couple months, we don't have to do this presentation anymore.
Yeah, no, I mean, we're going to do it through the end of the school year. We'll have to reassess and kind of see what happens over the summer, but I'm hoping that we're going to continue to make good, good gains. Next item on the agenda, item number twelve, is twelve and thirteen, actually, we're just behind because of our schedule last month.
Breaking.
Sorry. South Row. I was anxious to get into my report on South Row, and it just, it just jumped ahead like that.
I just thought that every time.
I thought there was like music was going to start.
The background.
I have a funny, a funny joke for later. All right, so two, two updates for you. These are the personnel reports we typically provide at the, the second meeting of the month. We have the January report, again, just to document the, a couple of new hires, a couple of resignations in the district. And then we didn't have any retirements or assignment changes. And then, again, just for your own purposes, the tracking sheet for February, again, we had a couple of new hires, a couple of resignations, and we didn't have any assignments, assignment changes or retirements. But we provide this just to give you a sense of the comings and goings of the staff of the district.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So it looks like we lost a special education teacher and a speech and language pathologist effective March. So what are we going to do from now to the end of the year to make sure those kids are being provided their services?
Yeah, so Amy is, Amy Reese is actually, because you just, again, this is another group you just can't find. She's had to contract with providers like vendors to provide the speech services for us. Where was the special ed one?
Right at the top. It was in the February report, I believe. Resignation.
Oh, in, in, in February. It would, for like a special ed teacher or any teacher that we had, like, leave mid-year, they would just be looking at like a long-term subsituation. So this person obviously isn't coming back, but it really wouldn't be any different, like a maternity leave or some kind of a leave at this point, where they'd be advertising and they'd be posting to fill like a long-term teacher assignment for the year. Oftentimes, just depending on when someone leaves, you know, they might, we still have some building-based subs, so they might have to put a building-based sub into it until they can hire someone. But we've been having fairly good luck on the teacher front. It, it's like the specialists, like the speech and language would be really hard to get right now. So that's more of a contracted service.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, though, that whoever we put in there is going to be able to provide the services for the kids.
Oh, I agree.
Okay. All right, any other questions on the personnel?
Every couple. First, how are we doing on fulfilling, getting the role of head of HR here filled? And my second question is, I, I always forget, what's the deadline for letting us know whether somebody's going to be retiring?
That passed.
Oh, okay.
That's, it's, I don't know the exact date. It's in January.
So we already know.
So, yeah, so we've already locked in with our retirements. So people have to tell us by a particular point whether they are retiring or they're going to rescind it. It's a date in January.
Okay.
So we, actually, today, this afternoon, we just launched the, like, the second round of our transfer process and our hiring process for all the known vacancies for the fall. So that always goes out by March fifteenth, so that went out today. We have the internal building transfer round already. That was right around February vacation. And then after this round, any positions that don't get filled by internal candidates will be actually hiring from the outside.
Okay.
So we're going to put a pretty aggressive push on, on the hiring this spring. So we're in good shape on that front. On the personnel front, Candace Hall, who's our interim HR person, she's with us through the school year and, you know, even through the summer if, if necessary, as we look to onboard and bring a new person on. We really, as I mentioned, we didn't have a strong candidate pool the first time we advertised. We sat on it for the holidays, and just last week, we re-advertised. So the posting just went up, and probably around the end of March, we'll start taking a look at candidates and seeing what we have in the candidate pool. So I, I can probably let you know in April when we get back together.
Okay.
Any other questions on the personnel reports? Nope, okay, great.
Thank you.
So next, we go on to school committee policy. So we've had requests to kind of just take a look at any policies that got enacted over the duration of the COVID pandemic. And, you know, there were a couple. One was the masking policy, which we've modified a couple of meetings ago. And then it was one, we was, what was it called? ECB, which was kind of like a supplemental emergency safety protocol. And I think you've quoted the copy in that, which is just grant the superintendent the ability to, to make changes if need be, based on the pandemic. And looking at it, it expires once a state of emergency is over, so essentially it's expired. So we don't have to make any adjustments. I didn't know if we had to rescind it. I believe MASC took it right off the.
I think they removed it from the website.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure, two weeks ago, I looked and it was there when Donna first read the request, and then when we looked again, it was gone. So I'm thinking MASC themselves just removed it from the site because it no longer had the applications there. So, so that one, we don't have to do anything. The masking one, I know we have in there, the bus transportation requiring mask, but again, that is predicated on the.
Yeah, there was language in the, I don't have it right in front of me, but there was language in there that basically said, as long as it was required federally, we had to do it. It federally changed, so basically, we don't have to go back at this point and amend that. We'll probably just need to go back in at some point this summer and take a look at that whole masking policy to see if we need to keep it, rescind it. As of right now, you do need to wear a mask in the health offices, the nurses' offices in the building still, so that's still in effect. We'll have to see what happens with that next, next summer. And then you also do have to wear a mask if you're returning from a positive, so that's still in our policy.
And then the other thing is, you know, we did come up with our own safety protocols for public participation at our meetings. I thought those served us well during the time that, that, you know, we needed them. I, I don't know if we all want to keep those anymore. Obviously, we don't require the mask or anything like that. We could probably rescind that particular set of procedures. But then, in, in looking at, there were certain aspects that were, I, I thought were, were good, in, in particular, the having people pre-registered to speak. I think it just makes things go a little bit more smoothly. And then just clarify, you know, a couple other areas of it. So I think our, I think both of our public participation policies are in the, in the packet. And so I went through and just tried to, oh, look what kind of modification we might be able to make to them, and we don't have to do anything with them tonight, but just to take a look at. So I, I gave everybody a copy of, of our policies with some highlighted areas, just to, you know, some small changes. The majority of what was there already is still there, but on the first policy, BDH, just to clarify that, that at the start of our regular school committee meeting, any resident, parent, guardian, or employee of the Chelmsford Public Schools are welcome to speak. And just to clarify that those are the people who are stakeholders in this process, and those are the people we would like to hear from. Just sort of want to have people from outside groups that are coming to speak for other purposes, like political purpose or whatever. You know, we want, we want to hear from people that, that, you know, that we need to hear from.
Right.
So just to clarify that, and then also the, the registration part at the beginning. And I think this helps particularly when we have groups that are coming in to, to presentations, like the school groups, to know if we are going to have a lot of people to. to know if we are gonna have a lot of people to come to speak, to just let them know, hey, you know, we have ten people registered, so you're probably not gonna be, you know, speaking until six twenty, six thirty. Particularly if we get back to the point where the students themselves are coming, you know, before COVID. We used to have, the school groups would come, and some of the, you know, elementary students would come, and we don't want to have them have to sit here for half an hour to, you know, for public participation. If we know ahead of time that we have a large group to participate, then we could say, you know, you guys will be on at six thirty and, you know, and just to kind of make things go a little bit smoother. So that was basically that first highlighted area there, the first policy. And then the second policy, which is just kind of the guidelines for public comment, again, just clarifying Chelmsford residents, just kind of further giving directions in terms of if they want to speak to just, they need to either advance the meeting, notify either the superintendent or myself, or whoever the chair is, I should say, at that point. And then there always has been, since we use the new procedures, directions on the agenda that gets posted with the town on how to do that. So that people, if they want to register, they know that that's one of the requirements. So that's that part. I know we had some conversations about time limits. And at first, we didn't think there were any time limits on our public input. We did actually have a twenty-minute time limit, was already part of our policies. But just to clarify that again, and I actually, in talking to Donna, you know, she suggests maybe a thirty-minute time limit. So we just, you know, and this is all subject to whatever people would want to do, to ordinarily no longer than thirty minutes, unless determined by the majority of the school committee or the chair. So if we had a larger issue and we had twenty people registered, you know, and ten were for one side and ones for the other side, we don't, you know, cut one side off before the end of that thirty-minute period. You know, if we have twenty people that all want to speak on the same issue, then maybe after half an hour, then we could, you know, limit it at that point. So we added that in there. And then, just to, again, clarify that the beginning of the meeting is for items on the agenda. And then I put something in there about our second public input session, because it really wasn't part of our policy. And this is, you know, again, we can talk about what people think. But if people want to, you know, again, if people want to come and speak on things that aren't on the agenda but that fall within our purview, that that would be a time to do that. And I put something in there about the written comments. Again, whether we want to continue that or not, it's up, you know, we did that mainly so because people didn't want to come in person during COVID. So we gave that option. Whether we want to keep that or not is up to us. So, so those are just some of the suggestions I had. You know, definitely, we can discuss it, we can take a look at it. I don't know, we probably don't have to run it through our attorney, because we really didn't make any substantive changes, just kind of clarifying things. But any ideas, any thoughts?
Yeah, so first of all, I appreciate you looking at that and clarifying that. I definitely have seen a couple speakers now that have not been stakeholders in the town, right? So I don't think it's appropriate to have our opinions swayed by somebody that doesn't vote for us to pay taxes or have any kind of kids in the school. So I'm glad we had that. On the first point, specifically during the second public input session, it says general public. Are we gonna continue, or is that specifically going to be for residents as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
It said, do register to speak during public, what do you call it? It was somewhere in there. Anyway, regardless, just make sure, I just want to make sure it's clear.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's what you're saying. Yeah, that would still be, that second public input would still be for the same. I think we could put that in there if we wanted to, the residents in the same kind of language as above as well.
All right, and then, and I like the idea of keeping the comments. If there's something that somebody wants to email us about, because they can watch from home and they can't attend, I think it's useful to us to get an email and be like, hey, you know, I did get a comment. I do think we should continue that. It doesn't take a lot of time, and it gives somebody another way to communicate.
Other thoughts?
So I'm not sure about the registering to speak. I understand, you know, I will say this, I do understand the second one, because to be perfectly honest with you, if we had people coming towards the end of the meeting to speak, they would be locked out right now unless we knew they were coming.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? So, but I don't also want to stifle somebody's opportunity to be able to come in and speak. So I guess my question would be, how far in advance of the meeting would somebody need to register?
I guess I look at, if you just ask my opinion, I look at it that it actually doesn't hinder anyone from speaking. It just makes it more orderly and can actually help kind of coordinate them. Because if someone would reach out, and they've been typically reaching out to me, and they have a question about something on the item, I'll say, oh, that's under the first piece of public participation, please try to be here at six, and here's our policy or whatnot. Or if they just want to make a general statement, I would say, you know, you're gonna have to speak under the second piece of the agenda. I'm gonna guess, you know, don't come at six, because we're gonna be on this for at least an hour or whatnot, come closer to seven. So I think it can actually be helpful. We have it right now where the agenda's posted on Friday. They're asked to let me know by four o'clock on Monday afternoon if they wanted to speak on Tuesday evening. I think the norm is like twenty-four hours before the meeting. But I have seen other communities that even just have it by noon on the day of the meeting. Because no one's trying to hinder someone from coming, but it's just more for the scheduling. So I think you would just have to figure out, like, how far in advance someone should have to notify you.
So I think that that's just something we should take into consideration.
Okay, yeah, yeah, right. Just, we want to be able to, again, one of the reasons to do this is we have a group presenting. We want to be able to give them some lead time, too. So we want to do it like an hour before the meeting and then try to contact them. So whether it's the day before, whether it's noon of the day, I think we could still be able to communicate with other presenters.
Just another comment, on the initial comment period, which has to be for items on the agenda, that puts an onus on us to make sure that that agenda's posted within a particular amount of time, so that people have sufficient time to figure out what is on the agenda.
Right.
And so is that something we've already predetermined when the agendas are gonna be up?
Well, the agenda, by law, because of the forty-eight-hour posting, if we have a Tuesday meeting, we have to post the agenda on Friday at the latest.
Right.
I try sometimes to get it in on Thursday, but oftentimes, it's Friday morning. But it's always posted forty-eight hours before the meeting, so that people can look at the agenda over the weekend if they want to. If I didn't get it posted by Friday, we couldn't be Tuesday. So it definitely is posted on Friday.
So it's still forty-eight hours?
Correct.
Yep. Any other thoughts, suggestions?
On the thirty minutes, I do think that, you know, if we have a particular item that, you know, we have a group of people here that are feeling very passionate about, I do think we have to, I think we owe it to them to listen to what they have to say, so.
Yeah, that's why I put the other part in, unless otherwise determined by the chair or the majority of the school.
Okay, so, yeah, I think that's important, that people understand that we're not gonna say.
Right, right.
But what we can do, too, the other thing is, is that we can cap it and then move, allow people to come back the following, the next meeting, and continue with, we can put that, we can move, we can have another.
They're always welcome to come.
Right, you know what I'm saying? So if we, you know, if we couldn't get to everybody in a night, it doesn't preclude us from having to just say we cannot talk about this anymore.
Right, right.
And then the other thing was, what was one other thing here? Oh, the emails. So one of the things that I'm wondering, we didn't used to read emails that came to us during the meeting.
Correct.
Right, we used to get them before the meeting and then read them. And I wonder if we should go back to that. I don't know if that's what you indicated here.
I didn't say one way or the other. I think this is more because of COVID, because people couldn't come to the meeting and ask questions at the end. So, you know, that's definitely something we could, I could put that in there, emails received before the meeting. And again, I also put in there, upon request. I mean, so we get lots of emails, but, you know, not all of them want to be, have their emails read. But if they have something, they want to make a comment or a question, and they can't attend the meeting for whatever reason, we want to give that up to them. But that's not a bad suggestion to have it received before.
Sometimes, you know, I'm paying attention to what's happening, and I'm not checking my email. And I'm always nervous that somebody's gonna email us to be, have something read, and I didn't see it, you know, because I'm not checking my email during the meeting.
All right.
I mean, just my two cents, I mean, you could look at like the period where you have to register to speak by, and just suggest if you want your item read at the meeting, you need to send the written copy by that time, too, just so that it could be, you know, formatted. I think when you even talk about, like, say, the thirty minutes or twenty minutes, or like if something's going long, the committee always has the ability to vote, to allow an additional, you just need a majority, right? So the committee could always vote to say, I want to take another ten minutes of public participation. And you do a roll call vote, and it prevails, then you have it. If it gets defeated, then the majority of the committee doesn't want to continue the dialogue, so you would stop it at that point. But you always have the mechanism to allow for something to be extended if you wanted to.
I think not allowing people to comment over the time period before the meeting in an email, it's not the same thing as, okay, I'm gonna register to go ahead and be present. I'm gonna have time to think this through and, you know, make out my comments and so on during the weekend, that's fine. But if you're just not going, if you're gonna send the email and you don't have enough time to compose the email, do whatever you need to do by that time period, it's not, it's not the same thing. You're just either registering your name, because you're gonna come and speak, or you're gonna give your entire comment. And then it's not gonna make it in there, because you just didn't have enough time to think it through over the weekend. Do you see what I mean?
Well, I'm not sure, because you wouldn't be emailing to say, like, I want to come, or here's my comment, until Monday, or if we decide to even have it, like, Tuesday, the day of the meeting.
Oh, okay, so you're saying that people can send the emails all the way up to a certain amount of time?
Yeah, Donna was just saying, we've been reading them, people would send us during the meeting, and we'd check our email. So we're saying, just like the registration, that just, we need some time to, you know, be able to.
Yeah, if it's, sorry.
No, so that would be emails that were sent that had nothing to do with the agenda item.
It could be either way, it could be either way. But again, this is not, we're not saying, you know, we'll read everybody's email. If you have something that you really want to say to the committee, but you can't come to the committee, and you notify us, say, I really want to have this read during the meeting and be put in the minutes, all that, then that's an appropriate vehicle for that.
People were pretty good about that.
Yeah, absolutely.
When they didn't want it read in and when they did want it read in, they really were.
Yep.
But, yeah, I just think a little lead time on that.
Yep, okay, anything else? All right, so I'll work on some of those other points, and then we'll bring this back at the next meeting. And if everybody likes the formatting and everything, then we'll.
Yeah, I would, the only thing, I think I would extend the registration period and the email period to noon time of Tuesday.
Yep, I have both noted.
I didn't know if you needed a specific time.
What's that?
I didn't know if you wanted a specific time.
No, I put down noon on the day of the meeting. All right, I think that's it for the policies, right? Nothing else?
No, I mean, technically, the other policy lapsed, so you don't have anything to do on that front. Did you want to formally rescind your current procedures for public speaking?
Sure, yeah.
Because they do still require masks and all of that. But it's just the procedure for in-person public speaking at school committee meetings.
So the safety program, what are they called?
Unless, again, I'm just speaking aloud, unless you want to keep it till the next meeting and then update your policy.
To tell you the truth, I'd rather keep something.
Okay.
Well, we'll keep this if you want to, and then we'll update the policy at the next meeting.
Right.
And then we can vote to rescind this at the same time.
Okay.
Okay.
Good idea. All right.
I'll make a note, too.
Okay. All right, field trips.
Just, yep, just one last field trip, and this is kind of a retroactive approval I emailed you about last week. We got some documentation a little bit late for Chelmsford High School DECA competition, which was last Thursday through Saturday. There was just a confusion with the paperwork, and the students were, obviously, we got it on Wednesday. They were leaving on Thursday for the trip, so there was no time to be able to get your approval. I just emailed with the conditions or the circumstances. And I'm putting it on the agenda tonight just to let you know that the trip did happen. Everyone went, came back safe, just for more record-keeping and tracking purposes. Obviously, we try to get these trips approved ahead of time. There was an oversight, but we'd like to get your retroactive approval for this trip, just for the records.
Make a motion.
I make a motion to retroactively approve the field trip to Boston that went successfully.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Jeff, aye, Maria?
Aye.
Five-zero. All right, any liaison reports?
I have some. So South Row PTO meeting happened last Monday. They had a successful finish to their book drive. Also, last Friday was their virtual science fair presentation, and I believe that's now a slideshow on the South Row website, correct? I think that might have been what was playing, yeah, yeah. Yes, yes. Today, we had visits from Curious Creatures and a therapy dog visit. And Wingmasters for Grade Two will be coming on the twenty-first of March. At Byham, there's Paint Night with Mrs. Brown on the sixteenth. On the twenty-sixth is Byham's Hootenanny Talent Show. Have you registered?
Hootenanny?
Talent show.
I did not know. I will have to put it on my calendar.
All right. And on the twenty-ninth is the three-day artist and resident, Rob Saret, will be visiting. And then tomorrow night is the Council of Schools meeting. And I believe that that is both in-person and virtual. And then one other thing I wanted to mention, that I don't think got mentioned under Good News, but I'm not sure, is that March is the youth art exhibit at the Chelmsford Library. So in the McCarthy Room, so people should check that out, that's grades K through twelve.
Anyone else?
Yep. A group of parents at the high school on Monday, which was Pi Day, provided two-hundred-and-twenty table-talk pies for faculty and staff with messages wrapped in them to celebrate Pi Day. That was greatly appreciated. And the PTO is still looking for volunteer parents to help with the after-prom breakfast. And the boosters met, and the boosters helped Thomas Brown and Coach Pishoni as they were heading down to the Nationals at Virginia Bees, and they gave them some financial support. They're a big fundraiser, and there are a few tickets left this Saturday at the establishment for the St. Patrick's Day gathering. That's the big fundraiser. And just always check the booster's website, because they're constantly doing things for our students. They do a really nice job.
All right, anyone else? Maria?
Did you? Okay. McCarthy PTO met. They provided me a report because I was at the select board meeting. So the Rock and Roll Bingo is coming up on March twenty-fifth. Kristen Falcher is organizing and spearheading it this year. Get your tables now, reach out to McCarthy's PTO if you want a table or tickets. Student Bingo looks to be having about seventy-five-plus students participating at this time. That's being run by Teresa Evans, and it's this Friday after school. They hosted a joint breakfast with administration, and teachers loved it. It was the donut check and bagels. And they also had Pi Day for teachers. Grade seven Black and Light Dance had over a hundred students participating. Was a fun time for everybody. And I remember when Nina Baylen brought this back to the seventh grade, so hooray for Nina. Her daughter, one of her daughters is graduating this year. And this year, it was run by Katie Calipores. And thanks, Katie, for doing this, it's important to the seventh graders at McCarthy. Now, Jeff talked a little bit about this, but it's open rehearsal tomorrow for the.
Open dress for her.
Yeah, and it's, this weekend is the competition, and Laurie Grant is running that this year, the whole event for the entire day to the ACT Association, and they need support. So just want to make sure parents reach out and help as much as they can. And it's Faith and Disponency is the name of our play.
The Brontes.
The Brontes, correct, the eighteen hundreds.
No, I don't know them personally. We did not go to school.
Jeff was only in elementary school back then. All right, I had, Chels, PTO was, two Mondays ago, we were at our own meeting, so they did send me the agenda. They continue to offer monthly enrichment activities, and most recent one was Sugar Bun Dental. The kids got toothbrushes, which I guess they really liked. They had a staff appreciation breakfast, was very appreciated by everyone. And then they're planning their Spirit Week for the beginning of May. And as always, as most of these PTOs, they're always looking for volunteers to help out with all these activities.
Yeah.
All right, any new items? It's good. Hey, I guess on this meeting is not till April twelfth, so. So.
Get a vacation. You get a vacation.
We get a vacation, okay? Of course, we have meetings in between the meetings.
We do.
Yeah, so, all right.
Just if I could, just give Jerry a little, a minute to talk about, if you would, the meeting that you went to for the, for your superintendent group, I believe, the national meeting? How did that go?
The Nashville one? Oh, it was good. No, so there's an annual conference that rotates around the country. And this particular year, it was in Nashville right before February vacation. But it was great. It was a good opportunity to just get together with other superintendents, kind of coming out of the pandemic a little bit, talking about kind of lessons learned, you know, what worked well in communities, what communities are still struggling with. And it was very interesting to kind of get a national. And it was very interesting to kind of get a national, national perspective on things, because I think sometimes in the Northeast, we really are kind of ahead of what's happening in, in other areas of the country. But still, the issues that I think a lot of communities are dealing with with regard to, you know, students and mental health services, shortage of staffing, you know, everywhere. It was, it was interesting to just kind of hear those themes, you know, across the country. And I think everyone was relatively positive that, you know, we're definitely moving in the right direction. You know, that it is definitely going to be not just a year and it's over, or COVID's behind us, but, you know, this is going to be a multi-year, three-to-five-year kind of plan for districts as they kind of emerge from COVID and start to restore some, some sense of normalcy in, in schools. But it was, I thought, though, the speakers were, were excellent, the national ones. The workshops were interesting, again, just to be able to kind of participate with other superintendents from around the country that you don't usually get to see. I get to see a lot of the, like, the masked people a lot, but it was very interesting. So it was a good couple of days away.
That's great.
Thank you.
I think it's an important thing that you participate in and gives us a perspective as a committee, too, so appreciate that.
Very good resources, I have to say. One of the things that I like, in addition to like the speaking piece, you do get to see all the different, like, national vendors and the different groups that come in and work with school systems. Like, we're working with DMG to do our strategic planning, but there were different groups like that that are out doing different projects in communities. So it is good to kind of just see what the rest of the country is doing, and you pick up some good contacts that you can then kind of bring back and.
And I thought it was the workshop on technical difficulties and how to handle them that you really, really enjoyed.
I don't remember going to that workshop.
That was clear, yeah.
Oh, that was a little hot.
All right, anybody have anything else to add? On that note, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I think we need it, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.